We open the Board of Select meeting for Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Time is now six oh four. Stand for pledge. Diligence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve warrant WR two four dash two one.
I move that we approve WR dash two.
Twenty four twenty one.
Twenty four twenty one.
Second.
Ava.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. We have no minutes.
Next number.
Is anybody?
Thank you.
Anyone here, public session?
Just one person, Karen.
Let's out.
Just one person.
Yeah.
Okay.
First up is the Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation.
Um, so Volunteer Appreciation Week is next week, um, and where our town is really built on volunteers. Um, I propose that we, um, uh, provide a proclamation from the Board of Selectmen, um, and I'll read it. Um, whereas the strength of a community is built upon the dedication and selflessness of its municipal volunteers, who serve independently and make up boards, committees, councils, and commissions. And whereas the invaluable contributions of municipal volunteers enhance the quality of life for all residents of Ocam. And whereas municipal volunteers play a vital role in supporting local initiatives, providing programs and services that benefit individuals and families in need. And whereas during National Volunteer Week, we recognize and honor the countless individuals who generously give with little or no compensation of their time, skills, and compassion to make Ocam a better place. And whereas the spirit of volunteerism fosters unity, compassion, and a sense of belonging among residents. Therefore, we, the Ocam Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim our April twenty first through twenty seventh as Volunteer Week in Ocam. We urge all residents to join us in expressing gratitude to our elected and appointed volunteers and recognize the positive impact they make in our community today on April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We proclaim and express our appreciation to all who serve, Donald, Lucy, and Erin. I would move that we adopt this proclamation.
You have a second.
Second.
Paul and Ava.
Hi.
Hi. We have a system, Allen Clerk appointment. Recommendation from the board.
I thought, um, the three applicants were, um, very good. Um. Great interviews. Um, I do think that, uh, one of them, um, excelled, has a great background, um, in, um, office management, um, attention to detail, especially with all of the, um, uh, things that need to be entered, um, in the town clerk's systems. Um, I would recommend that we appoint Karen Kilday Harper, um, as the Assistant Town Clerk.
Second.
Ava.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, I'll notify her and get this one in. Next is the Lester Regional Public Health Coalition into municipal agreement.
So we, um, reviewed that a week or so ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, they're asking all of the municipalities, boards of health, and boards of selectmen, um, to co-sign, um, their towns', um, agreement. Uh, the Board of Health is having a meeting on Saturday, um, after the, uh, road cleanup, um, to, uh, sign, um, its, uh, portion. But I would, uh, move that we, uh, accept the IMA with the Lester Regional Public Health Coalition for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant.
I agree. Page eleven is blank, is it supposed to be?
Yes.
I just want to make sure there's not supposed to be something printed on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All set?
I'm all set.
Paul and Ava.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. You only need one signature, you can vote.
I think so.
Okay.
Do you?
All right, Town Hall Study Committee.
We are looking for an update to see where we're at as far as, um, preparation for the election, right? This is supposed to, is this the non-binding at the election, or is this non-binding at the town?
It would be.
Town.
Town meeting.
Meeting, yeah.
So, um, are we on target for that? And is there going to be an education session prior to the meeting on the, um, the three options?
I don't know, but form.
I was just gonna say, you're the only one.
Everybody told me to be there, I don't know where everybody else is.
Has there been any meetings lately?
Yeah, I think meeting a couple of weeks ago. We should probably redo this.
I spoke with Tom Hughes and I, he says there's nothing official yet, but they are planning on meeting next week.
Oh.
So.
So.
All right.
Sorry, I had to make that long trip.
Yeah, I was killing.
Roll down the hill.
I know you rushed to get here, Mike.
But with the, um, like, we just had, uh, the House was accepting earmarks. And, um, the Senate's gonna be accepting earmarks in, in a few weeks, so if we wanted to put something in for like a study, uh, it'll be important to have some kind of, um, initial plan.
Yeah, I don't really wanna speak without the whole committee here. I think there's some basic decisions that need to be made before it even moves forward. And that basically what, what do we want to do? What do we want to give up? What don't want, don't want to give up? I think that's something the committee is gonna, uh, argue about. Because if it goes one way, that opens up a whole, um, a whole pathway versus the other way, um, basically in regards to this building. And affordability, so.
Again, cheaper.
No, that's for sure.
My understanding, though, of the initial formation of the Advisory Committee to the Board of Selectmen was that it was to look at what the options would be.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe there are three. And then that's what's gonna be voted on by the townspeople as to which option is chosen, not by the committee.
Yeah, that would be correct if that's what the committee, you know, I, I don't know that the committee has settled on any options. Three options or any options.
Okay.
Um. Like I say, there's gotta be some decisions made as to whether, like I say, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the committee, but what do you do with this building if your option is the other option?
Right.
Um. One of the other options is the school. Now, eight, nine years from now, you may have more kids in this town than you know what to do with.
What happens when the other towns start developing in the school and Barry needs those rooms back?
Well, the other option too is maybe that this town is at a point where we should take our elementary school back. And, you know, take complete control of it instead of bussing the kids around.
Remove from the district.
Just K through six.
Can you do that?
Probably have to buy our way out.
You probably have to have legislation in Boston for that.
Yes.
This is a regional district.
Yeah.
You had split a regional district.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't be splitting there. I wouldn't think you'd be splitting the district. You'd just remove K through six.
You're, you're splitting the district, you're taking those kids.
There wasn't, K through six was never part of the original district.
Why are they considered part of the district now?
Because we voted it in to build our addition actually later.
They're part of the district.
Correct. But you can get in, there's gotta be a way to get out.
There is, through the legislature, all that.
Yeah, I, I didn't say it was gonna be easy.
It's not gonna be easy.
No, it won't be.
And the Commissioner of Education has a lot to say about it.
Yeah. But we also have, you know, a decision to make in town, whether we're gonna continue to bus kids around.
Hmm.
You know, but I, I mean, it's really, it's, it's a shell game.
Oh, yeah. Exactly.
You know, the pea is under one of the shells and, I mean, I don't know how you feel about it, but the Ocam kids should be educated in Ocam, not bus to another town or to the high school. That, I think the whole thing is converging on that we have such a big high school because of the addition that was built for the classes that graduated two thousand four, five, six, seven, eight, and then it's trailed off basically after twenty twelve. So that's what that whole addition was built for, was all those kids.
Mm-hmm.
So. I mean, the other option is all the elementary schools end up at Quan. You know, I, I, I don't know whether they've ever had that discussion, but at least on the record, probably off the record.
Yeah.
Um, it's probably been discussed to close all the elementary schools.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, that's where, when I say it's up to the towns, do you wanna give that up? I don't. Yeah. We came from a hundred kids in town going to school here in this building.
Mm-hmm.
And that saw the building of the elementary school, you know, on Deacon Allen Drive.
Right.
But it just, it's ten years from now. And being a senior citizen, I can say it, we're gonna be, you know, there're gonna be younger people moving into those houses. It's just the laws of nature. So. But nobody can tell us, the superintendent certainly can't tell us what the population's gonna be in ten years.
I don't look at you as a senior citizen.
I am.
I know, but I don't look at myself either.
But I mean, ten years from now, we could have five hundred kids in town.
Right.
And if we move the town hall to the elementary school as an option, well, then what do we do?
Right.
And then we let, did we let this go? Did we sell it? Did we? And there's other ramifications that go with this building.
Yeah.
One of them is a neighbor next door, you know, there's agreements there.
Mm-hmm.
Or do we expand this building?
Right.
That would be my choice. You know, we'd be, tear this room off, go up two stories, and then go with a, an addition that way. Move the police department down here, you know, with a garage underneath, and then move the senior center up to the police station. No stairs, no, you know, that would, in my perfect world, that's what I would do, but I'm just one person, so.
I think before any other decisions are made, even before the board or the commission makes a decision, you're gonna need a feasibility study. And that's gonna have to come through the state as well.
Yeah.
And we should be notifying our state senator as soon as possible that we do require or are looking for a feasibility study. And he can put it on his record that he needs to look at this to see what he can do for Ocam.
Yeah, and I think part of that would be, uh, you know, the utilities, the mechanical structure, electric, plumbing, heating, um, just the whole assessment of the building.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as to what it would be to bring it up to, you know, twenty twenty four code. I mean, the idea that, you know, the walls have insulation, I, I would doubt it. You know, maybe this part, but then again, I mean, you're right, see some of the old style installation in that missing panel of the mic light, that should tell you something. But I think structurally, the building is sound and square, it's. So.
Hopefully they'll have a report for us coming soon. Otherwise, we can't make too many decisions until it goes to the town and the people have their say.
No, I honestly think before it goes to the town, we should, we should vote some money to do whatever, to do that assessment, whether it's architectural or engineering, to come up with some hard numbers, you know, as to what you're looking at to rehab this building, increase the space, um, a new building, that's gonna be pretty straightforward, I would think, that's just planning.
Yeah.
It's not coming in and assessing, you know, with people that can write up a hard quote.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with.
Yeah.
I, I'll be anxious to hear their final report.
You'll be there. You'll be there at the meeting.
I'll be there.
This could be a twenty twenty five budget.
We have questions from Alan on looking at his, um, and our.
Interpretation?
Yes, and, um, I think we, I think we decided on what we were presenting, um. So I don't know, Don, if you, if you're able to pull up his email and we can go through what we have in the SharePoint. Um, I know the first four items were, uh, omissions in the update, um, in the, uh, SharePoint Drive.
Okay, first one was the ambulance assessment.
Yep, um, that was not entered, uh, in our SharePoint, um, but I did, uh, yeah, what was the dollar amount?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Okay. Uh, let me just make sure it's in there. Yeah, so there was not anything entered, so twenty seven hundred. Okay, it's now there.
The next one was assessors' part-time wages.
Uh, yeah, he was saying that we did not allocate a three percent.
Well, we're not going to, there's no employee there.
Um, yeah, I'm good with that.
So he's got the request that twenty thousand in our budget says twenty one, five, twenty five?
For which one?
He assesses salary.
No, I think he was saying it should be twenty one, five, twenty five with the.
It was twenty one, five, I, Diane sent a no.
Oh, reducing it to twenty thousand.
To twenty.
So I reduced it to twenty thousand.
So you did that.
Yes, and that was per.
Those are the first four things, right?
And he even replied to that saying, thank you for, you know.
He thought so or something. The, so there was, we're all assessor, right? The next one was assessor.
Office supplies.
Yep, I reduced that.
Eight hundred?
Yep.
And then two hundred for dues.
Yes, I reduced that.
So those are all set.
Okay.
Board of Health part-time wages, we said five thousand, he added the three percent.
Right, we did not.
We did not, yep.
So do we want to add the three percent?
Yeah. Admin assistant education.
It's, and we, it was.
We put in twenty five?
Mm-hmm.
And then reduced it to fifteen?
Um, no.
I think it was a.
Twenty five hundred, isn't it? Let me see.
Right, and reduced it to fifteen?
Uh, that's what it says, yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Or was it thirty five and it was the twenty five?
It is twenty five, yeah.
That's what it was.
It's twenty five.
So he's got on the budget request fifteen hundred, so that should be twenty five.
Correct, and that is what it is in our.
In our budget. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. COA, NADA wages.
That is, his is incorrect. We at our meeting, um, stated that it would be the twelve thousand, yes.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Okay. Next was fired, part-time wages. We had forty eight, seven oh eight fifty, and he's got forty three, six eighty nine, fifty one.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure we said forty eight.
Mm-hmm.
Cause he was.
Higher.
Something.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then that included the three percent.
Mm-hmm.
Included three percent. Yeah. So it's a five thousand dollar increase, but twelve hundred of that is the, uh, three percent.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we added training. And then.
We did, because he has more firefighters.
Right. So the forty eight, seven oh eight fifty is the correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What is it, forty eight, seven oh eight fifty?
Forty eight, yeah, seven oh eight fifty. Uh, Planning Board part-time wages.
We did not put a three percent.
We did not. Well, it's a wage, so it should.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You don't have anybody else.
Yeah, I wonder who, who is the employee?
Yeah.
That's not part of the stipend? The, the five hundred is stipend.
So they, they. So I'm confused, like, why are some people?
Part-time wages.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
The tree warden is listed as salary, but it used to be a stipend. So when did, why are some salaries and some stipends? Cause we're not doing any increases for stipends.
No. That's something we should separately look at. What says salary, what says wages, what says stipends?
Yeah, cause that wasn't always the case, so.
Um.
You know, cause we didn't put a three percent for.
Never stipend, so.
If, if you're using sal, the term salary, nobody fits that legal definition.
Right, right.
So. Should be wages. I'll do that, I'll go through.
Okay.
And make note of where the word needs to be changed.
Yeah, leave it with the, just the five hundred, not the three percent.
Cause there's no employee.
Yeah, there's no employee there.
And I must say, a few of the members of the planning board have signed off forfeiting their.
Stipend.
Stipend, which is, if there's five members, it's a hundred dollars per member.
So is that what that is, is stipend?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
So that's a stipend.
Yeah, yes, should say stipend.
I should say stipend.
It's always been the stipend, yeah.
No, there's no three percent.
Right.
Okay.
It's like Cemetery Commission.
Yeah.
That's a stipend.
Called a stipend.
Yeah.
Right.
So they would not get three percent.
Yeah.
Did that start losing the stipend?
For?
For anybody?
The stipend is just like, thank you.
I, I know what it is, but I was on the board, there was, nobody was on a stipend.
Well, they've been in stipends for years.
Yeah, like it's, well, not, everybody was a salary, even if it was only twenty five bucks, that was your salary.
They don't call it salary, though, they call it stipends.
But that's why they, some of them are listed as salary.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Who made the change?
Yeah, we don't know.
Cause when I was tree warding, it was stipend.
It's been a stipend ever since I've been on the Cemetery Commission or any of the other boards. It's always been stipends.
Yeah, cause when I was on the board, I don't ever remember anybody having a stipend. It was, it was a salary, even if it was only, you know, Board of Health was twenty five dollars, fifty dollars, and seventy five dollars, or a hundred seventy five fifty, you know, but.
There's like, the building inspector, the animal control officer, no, they're a salary. They're salaried. But they get their portion, well, at least the building inspector, he doesn't.
Yeah.
Broken down as two halves.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those can't, those are not salaries.
It, it, it's changed in the last five years, I think, between the terminology.
No.
And I've been hearing it, but I mean, like.
I, 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 I remember, I was surprised about tree warden where it says salary, um, cause it, it definitely was a stipend.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Change went in when county government went out, because everybody used to have, if you only made fifty bucks, it's the clerk of this election. Some of that money went to the county retirement system as an elected official.
Mm-hmm.
So if you were elected, um, you became part of the county retirement.
Yeah.
From, so when that changed county retirement, um, they sent me a letter saying, do you want the money or do you want it to roll over into the new retirement system?
Mm-hmm.
So they just sent me a check for whatever it was.
Right, right.
Well, that's.
I don't know when that's the stipend thing took over after that, but everybody that was elected, whether it was tree warden, dog cat, well, not dog catcher, cause they're appointed. Everybody was, it was a salary.
Even if you look at the town books, it says stipend.
Yeah.
Like, next two thousand and nine, it was a stipend.
Yeah, but you gotta go back further than that.
Yeah, cause county government went away before that.
County government went, went away in the late nineties.
Yeah.
Yes.
And members of the board.
Even before then.
Back in the eighties were automatically on health insurance.
Wow.
Imagine that today.
I wonder if it has anything to do with. I wonder if it has anything to do with that some appoint, you know, whoever received stipends, some didn't want it to be paid out as payroll versus a vendor payable check, so I know.
Changed in the last.
When I started here, that first round, right at, well, the second round, when I, me and the former accountant from the same firm, straightened it out where it's like, to make it all synced, everybody gets it twice a year, and everybody has to go through payroll, it doesn't matter how small it is, it needs to, because any money, any funds coming from the town need to run through payroll.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's in the.
With the stipends.
They did.
They did deduct.
Now they do.
Now they do, but now they do, now they do. It's in the accounting legislature.
A stipend, it's like for expenses, stipends, you know. And then all of a sudden, they started withholding. You know, with the switch and the accountants, I don't know whether Lisa started that or not, well.
No.
There was a change, it was just.
Yes, because the D O R told us it's payroll.
Yeah.
And the new, and the firm, they follow everything by the book, as should, and, you know, they said, any funds that come from the town should, need to run through payroll.
Susan Turnbull, New Branch, you wrote, your discussion cleared it up, but I collected a stipend from nineteen ninety six to two thousand and thirteen. And there was never any connection to the retirement or any withholding or anything out of it, so it's since two thousand and thirteen.
Police admin assistant wages, he added the three percent, we.
We did not.
Forgot about that. Poll workers. The elections.
At those stipends too, or are those hourly?
Those are hourly.
They're repaired by the hour.
So they.
Minimum wage, usually.
Yeah. Five thousand allocated. We had three percent. Okay. Debt interest municipal building. His question is, did this go down? Yes. It was down every year.
Right.
Her latest. Wendy, Wendy's latest showed twelve nine fourteen. Instead of thirteen, seven seventy five. So. That's the change there, so that is correct, it did go down. Short-term interest. Budget request is thirteen hundred, and he's got our budget saying forty one thousand, three sixty five. Should that be in the fire truck override? That's not short-term. That's, that's a bond, but shouldn't be on the short-term. He's right, should be in the fire truck override. Dead exclusion, excuse me. All right, what's the county retirement? Requested was a hundred and twenty one, two thirty six, our budget says ninety eight, seven thirty six. And he's got a note, he had library benefits, no.
We added twenty two thousand plus another.
Not to request the county retirement.
Right. It was to. Yeah.
So the number ninety eight, seven thirty six is the actual number that the retirement board gave us last month. That's going to be your fee. So we know what that is. So it's not a hundred and twenty one, it's ninety eight, seven, but it's not because of anything the library did. The annual. Fire truck principal and interest, hundred twenty five thousand. The bank has told us, put eighty five thousand on the principal, and then the forty one something for the interest. And it is possible that we may be doing this year after year, because the rates are high. Bank is kind of suggesting you can do that. Rather than lock into six percent, but in the next nine years, and that goes down in three years. You can do this every year, roll it over.
Instead of a bond.
Yeah.
Short-term borrowing.
So. That's something Wendy will explain to us more, but.
But still with a expected payoff in ten years.
And we said ten years. Nowhere in the ballot, nowhere in anything that was voted on said ten years, was leaving it up to us. We said ten, so. Town share of Medicare was listed at twenty thousand for FY twenty five. And we put thirteen thousand. There was extra money in the Medicare account.
So that we reduced that.
And we did. So that's correct. For closure expenses. Budget has twenty five hundred, we said two thousand. Really, she said to us that it was all right to, to do that during her presentation. So that's okay. Tree warden salary. They had a three percent, so you get a whole eleven twenty five.
But that'll pay the IRS.
There you go, huh? So that's right.
Is it, though? Isn't it a stipend?
Oh, wait, excuse me, yeah, it's a stipend, yeah.
Although it's called a.
It's called a.
It's called a salary.
It's a stipend.
But it really is a stipend.
It should be the IRS.
So three seventy five is what.
The county board is listed.
So I'll add three percent to Board of Health clerk, planning board, no. Poll workers, three percent, and police admin, three percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So going through what was requested and what we agreed on, we've cut it by eighty seven hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty six cents. So we're not two hundred and fourteen.
Oh.
Good.
And they had a meeting on Wednesday.
Yep. I don't know about you, but I'm going to go to that.
I've been to all of them.
I know.
So I will be there.
Be there, okay, good.
Especially since there was a question in the emails that came on it.
Yeah.
I want to make sure everything gets smoothed over.
Yeah.
Everybody's happy.
So other than that, I think we're on the line with.
Is it okay if we all go? We just can't.
Without voting on anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think we've already, as a board, voted on everything.
Already voted on everything.
So it's just, you, you can provide.
Answering questions, that's all. So once we get this squared away, we're on target with them.
We should be.
Okay.
So I'll update these three wage three percents tonight or tomorrow morning. Two AM.
Have to wake up from your nap.
We have any other questions on the budget?
No.
Please, Turnbull.
Yes.
Susan Turnbull, New Branch, you wrote, what was the final decision on the library director's expansion of hours?
Twenty five.
Stay. That's what it is now, right?
No.
No.
Nineteen and a half now.
Okay.
Let's go on to.
Is that going to be a warrant article that's going to go as a?
Through budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Admin assistant report, do you have anything?
Um. Candidate number one for the highway superintendent position withdrew. So now there are two. And the Mike Russ, the current plumbing inspector, went and looked at the water heater today at the Okam Center School. It's more than what he would want to do. So he did put it in writing, which could be used as a solicitation for a quote. I spoke with Steve Gaspar, and he was going to get back to me on when he can link up with the school. It's just tough this week because it's school vacation. And Chris Como will be looking at it Monday morning at seven AM.
Hmm, good.
And that's going to be a reserve? Are we paying for that?
We don't know what it costs, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I think that the school's facility manager already had a quote, but it was only for the.
Twelve thousand that didn't count.
No labor.
Right.
No labor, no tax.
And Mike Russ seemed to agree that it's going to be close to double that amount roughly, you know, maybe a little less, but give or take. And he suggested that if it's, you know, he's not sure if there's like, if it leaks, that it should be put up on blocks, and maybe like some form of pan underneath it, in case it starts to leak again, or if the ground has a drainage.
Said, um, the.
Kevin Clark?
Said that there was a sump pump or something.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, okay. So he just wanted to, in case it wasn't, that would be his suggestions. So that's that, and last, I completed my last and final class for the procurement. I submitted my application to be certified as of this morning, so we'll see.
Congratulations.
Oh, thanks.
It was a lot of work. Many, many hours put in on, on that.
God bless you.
It'll be nice to have it on board in town that we now have a recruitment officer.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Yep, very good.
And she did very, very well on all her tests.
Going back to the water tank.
That's the teacher in me.
I, I, I looked through, I couldn't find anything that would be a Board of Health issue as far as not having hot water. But the school, state school board might have some requirement, but I don't think it's a Board of Health. They do not prepare food there. It's, it's brought in.
Right, it is.
So. But they did tell us that if it died, they would be forced to cancel school, so.
Then, how long does it take to fix it and get a new one and put it in? They'd be out of school probably for a few days.
Well, I think that might be why they were trying to get us to.
Get a head start on it.
Do something about it.
New business, and Board have any new business? I just got an email.
Oh.
The new library director takes over the twenty ninth?
She was there today.
Was she?
Yeah, she was. I saw them coming in.
So according to this, she'll work nineteen and a half hours till July first, and then go into the new hours.
Good.
She will attend our April twenty ninth meeting to introduce herself. That's good.
I did suggest that she reach out to the treasurer as soon as possible to make sure that she can get all of her payroll straightened out earlier this afternoon, and she did come over and got that information.
Okay.
Since the treasurer will be away.
All right, on the role business, we have library grant updates.
So I will put a request into National Grid now that I know who's responsible. They estimated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run a half a mile of fiber, because they estimated they would have to replace all of the telephone poles and cut down dozens of trees along this road. But they also estimated there were fifty four poles, and there are actually only twenty four poles. So we ended up putting in the grant application, not with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, but with a hundred thousand dollar estimate, which I still think is going to be a lot higher. But they did suggest that it'll take a few months to get their official analysis. So by the time we get the notification about the grant, hopefully we'll have the real numbers, but now we have to track down Verizon, and hopefully it doesn't take a month and a week to find out who that contact is. You don't know a contact for Verizon, do you? For the polls.
Just as far as learning.
So.
I'm still waiting for them to cut down here. That was nine years ago. In a tree wearing a hole through their, their cable coming up the hill. They said before it snowed, but that was nine years ago.
But we were told at one point that these poles were only National Grid, and then at five o'clock the night before the grant was due, we were told, oh, no, Verizon has to, Verizon co-owns all the poles. So now we have to get permission from Verizon.
No, because last I heard was National Grid took over all the poles. That's kind of where it's stood, but.
Yeah.
We've got quite a few poles around town that National Grid's replaced and, you know, put their wires back up and cut the top of the pole off, and the Verizon stuff has been hanging on the old, the old stub pole for years and years and years, so.
So I have to get in touch with Verizon, because the director of the, what was it called, third-party connections?
Connections, yeah.
Said that they are co-owned in Okam.
Possibly could be.
Yeah, but that's not what one person had told us, so.
Yeah, because I had heard that National Grid had taken it.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
But all the new poles that went up for Spectrum for the expansion.
Only National Grid.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it applies to us, but not to them.
Evidently.
And they gave Phoenix a really hard time.
The accident down the road here on Waycoon Road, that pole was knocked down. That was National Grid that replaced it.
Maybe they're still waiting to try to find out who the contact at Verizon. So the application's in for a hundred and eighty seven thousand, I think.
Okay.
To run the fiber and then reduce the internet costs.
Okay. All right.
And I don't know how much it's going to cost for the grant writer, but I don't think we got a bill yet.
Website.
Because why wouldn't it have an issue? So we voted, we discussed it over multiple meetings, looked at the three different proposals. I asked the question about the comp buys. Wasn't very clear, apparently. They do use a third-party that invoices, that is registered in the state bidding.
The IT contract.
So now we're waiting on the account.
She replied.
So is it okay?
She said that the contract then would be.
Through that, and he said yes. Will be invoiced by that.
Yeah, the billing will come from the, from the IT holder.
So, but the contract then would need to be signed between the town and that.
That company.
That company, yeah.
So we're waiting on that IT company's revised contract. Which, my understanding, will be the exact same price as the original.
Okay.
The twenty five, five hundred.
Yep. Financial management review.
So they are, they reached out to us last Wednesday or Thursday, I got back to them, gave them dates, attempted. They reached out to us last Wednesday or Thursday, I got back to them, gave them dates, attempted to reach out to all of the people that they were looking to connect with. Um, after I heard from the accounting firm and the treasurer, I said, okay, the twenty ninth. Um, I did hear yesterday maybe from the assessors that they're not available. Um, so I wrote back to um DLS um saying. Could you do it on the eighteenth or the twenty fifth just for those two people? Did not hear back.
Okay.
Um, but in a small town that relies on volunteers and and a few employees, I'm hoping they'll. Find a way to do an hour and a half on one day and more hours on another.
Okay.
But their plan is to come on the twenty ninth. Knowing uh they know that the treasurer is only here from three thirty to seven thirty. So and Alan is, oh yeah, and Alan, Alan's available on the twenty ninth as well.
Okay.
In the afternoon. So if we can kind of just be aware that on the twenty ninth, um they'll be here. And they can do Zoom if um Lucy were dying to do Zoom.
And the accountant will join Zoom.
Zoom, yep. And they were supposed to send a draft of the schedule on Friday and then a draft of the schedule on Monday. And it's Wednesday, and we have not received the draft, that's Tuesday, we have not received the draft.
It was a holiday.
State holiday.
Oh, that's right, they don't work, okay.
Okay. I'm available the twenty ninth. You.
It's fun being retired. I have one other ish thing for old business. I I put it under old business because we've kind of discussed it before, just haven't followed through on reviewing the policy for the highway department. Because we're now hiring new persons. Hopefully sometime for the highway department, uh looking at seasonal hours, seasonal rates over time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we need to take a look at that, I think, truthfully, I think before we hire somebody new, so we can present it to them and say, this is what we have in mind.
Yeah.
And see if they have anything to add to it, detract from it, or say they don't like it.
And we're doing. Next Monday, twenty second.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
At six o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Um, because right now seasonal hours go from. April, no, May, May through October.
First weekend of May.
Memorial Day, the Labor Day was the way it was originally intended.
Oh.
Somehow.
It looks a little bit different.
It has gotten a little stretched out throughout the year. So we might wanna take a look at that, make any changes necessary. And I I just thought too, because we weren't sure about s- snow for winter last year, hiring a a place to get plow drivers out here. If we couldn't get enough, fortunately, we had an easy winter, so we didn't.
Right.
Run out of money on any of the accounts, we were lucky.
Yeah.
So we might wanna look at that again for them, that that's might be a possibility that we will have to look at if we lose drivers again.
Yeah.
We keep losing them every year.
Okay.
Um, going back, if I could, to the website.
Yep.
Um, they are looking for approximately ten videos slash um. Um, pictures, um and I did do some drone video today. Um. That potentially could be used. Um, so if anybody is seeing a drone around the town common, it's for that purpose.
Oh, it wasn't yours?
It was mine.
Yeah, this this one was.
So um, but I would also say that if people have ideas uh for the website um of a town. Something for the town website, a picture, certainly to send that to us.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Um, but uh. Um, and then I don't know if you saw yesterday or today, it was not yesterday because it was a holiday. Um, but I think today, the um, the um. They pushed the chapter ninety bill to ways and means um for final enactment, both the House and the Senate. Um, approved it, um and which will be a lot earlier for to disperse the funds.
Hmm.
Um, and it actually was more money. Um, so I'm curious what the plan is for chapter ninety for around this spring. Uh, hopefully the highway superintendent can give us an idea. Um, how that's gonna be uh, how he plans on doing it.
She's looking for planning board, are they meeting tonight?
It's on the.
Okay.
Board.
Probably downstairs.
That was Nancy.
Yes.
Oh, in the other room.
Okay.
Maybe.
Um, and then I did hear from the treasurer, they are planning a dry run of um. The new uh Harper's um time and attendance at the next pay period. Uh, which impacts nobody, it's all behind the scenes. Um, and then the following pay period, she plans on doing a dual paper and. Um, uh, but the paper will be the real one still, and then the following. They would move um to the um electronic being the only version.
Okay. Have any correspondence? Okay, April fifteen, twenty twenty four, members of the COA and select board, I am resigning. From the Board of Council on Aging effective immediately, Janice Hendrick.
I move we accept the resignation uh with appreciation.
Yep.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
This needs to be filed with the town clerk.
Yep.
Does the uh library director need to be sworn in? Just wondering if um everybody knows that process of of being sworn in. Uh, cause isn't it normally the clerk who sends a letter? To say congratulations.
Well, they're gonna send a letter to the clerk.
Right, we just signed up today, but.
They'll throw an email.
Yeah.
So. Once that's done, she gets sworn in. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye, seven oh two.
This is a rec.